If I could live my life again, I'd do things differently. I'd reach out instead of closing in. I'd love unselfishly. I've come to know what matters most of all to you and me. It's the love. It's the love. It's the love. Sent to us from God within, from above. It's the love. And when our work on earth is through, we'll have much, much more to do. And then we all will know the truth. It's the love. For God so loved the world, He sent His Son to set us free. It's the love. That's what He meant when Jesus said, He came to show what we now know counts most at covering. It's the love. It's the love. It's the love. Sent to us from God within, from above. It's the love. And when our work on earth is through, He will have more for us to do. And then we all will know the truth. It's the love. Yes, when our work on earth is through, He'll have more for us to do. And then we all will know the truth. It's the love.
Excuse me, people, but if you're going to have a conversation, it's not beside the cocktail lounge. But if you're going to have a conversation, please go outside.
I bring the machines. They're every heart's desire. I hold each mighty child. Nothing I love improves. I am sorry so quickly of these. For He's there among you. He will comfort me. I give them strength that you may endure. I broke him with first words that you may rest assured. I bear your burdens, neither may they at my feet. For He's there among you. He will comfort me. Comfort me. Now with the presence, experience my being. Comfort me. Come, child, be near me just to comfort me. I am the one truth. For I am the way. The Father of Christ, I've conquered that truth. I am comforted in your time. For He's there among you. He will comfort me. Comfort me. Now with the presence, experience my being. Comfort me. Come, child, be near me just to comfort me.
I'd like to interject something here for you folks to just help you be aware. I recorded this song I wrote 40 years ago. So the Urantia Book teachings have been being written about and written in Psalm for many years. My former music publisher, Mary John Wilkin, wrote this song with Kris Kristoffson, "One Day at a Time, Sweet Jesus." And when I met her, she's the one that introduced me to the Urantia Book. And we had the first State of Tennessee Urantia Book Study Group every Sunday for several years. And it was a colorful crowd we had too, believe me. But anyway, I just wanted you to be aware that Jesus' teachings are in the music world and have been for quite some time. And we hope to generate a few more of them from the past for listening pleasure. But I just wanted you to be aware that this isn't just starting. This has been going on for a while now. So thank you. I'm going to play a song right now that I just recently finished. And I hope I asked Jesus if He minded if I used His teaching and turned it into a song, and He didn't seem to mind. Jesus said, "I am the way, the truth, the life. Follow Me. Live your life in service. Shine your light so others see. Love your neighbor as yourself, and even as I also do. Be more like a father. Keep on bearing fruit." Jesus said, "The way is narrow." And He said, "The way is straight." Just heed God's voice within. Do His will and keep the faith. Ask and it is given. Seek and you shall find. Come, all who labor. I will give you peace of mind." The life that Jesus lived was honest. It was true. His life imparts a love-filled heart that longs for me and you. A love expressed in faithfulness, giving all He had to give. Yes, His truth lives here on earth through the life that Jesus lived. Jesus said, "The Fathers asked that you and I should drink this cup. Let this human life we live be an expression of God's love. In the end, if we should choose to lay our lives down for our friends, there is no greater love ever will be known to man." Jesus said, "I came to liberate, to comfort, love, and save. God and I will care for you. Provisions have been made. And if you accept this gift of life, we give eternal ease. We're sure that you'll love heaven. Come with us and see. The life that Jesus lived was honest. It was true. His life imparts a love-filled heart that longs for me and you. A love expressed in faithfulness, giving all He had to give. Yes, His Spirit lives on earth through the life that Jesus lived. A love expressed in faithfulness, giving all He had to give. Yes, His truth lives here on earth through the life that Jesus lived." When I was a child, defenseless, naive, you took my hand and you said, "Follow Me." You nourished my body. You helped me to grow. You taught me the things you thought I should know. Scared of the darkness, I longed for the light. You said, "Have faith, never give up the fight." Out of all of the lessons you taught me in life, I'm so thankful you taught me to love. You taught me to love. Now I'm counting my blessings in stars up above. Out of all of the things that I've learned in my life, I'm so thankful you taught me to love. Through heartaches and hurts, you tend to my wounds. Your warm embrace says I'll feel better soon. With this glimpse of love and what life has in store, I find myself craving them both more and more. Here I stand at this threshold. I'll walk through the door. This world full of memories beckons once more. Out of all of the memories I'm thinking of, I'll remember you taught me to love. You taught me to love. Now I'm counting my blessings in stars up above. Out of all of the things that I've learned in my life, I'm so thankful you taught me to love. Out of all of the lessons I've learned in my life, I'm most thankful you taught me to love. I'm so thankful you taught me to love. God bless you all. Thank you very much.
If you ever get a chance to ask Marty about all the people that showed up at that study group in Nashville, I think it's top secret, but she might tell you that, you know, Mike McKiessick needs to have an interview with her.
Yeah, we've already talked.
Test. Need volume? Test, test. Can everyone hear me? Oh, okay. Everyone can hear me? Okay? Is that better? That's interesting. When you're at the microphone, you don't hear what's heard out there. It's really interesting. Well, I want to say welcome. And I want to say thank you to everybody. And I want to say especially to the musicians, yeah, it'd be great a little bit more. Several times while I listened, I thought of the conductors of worship on Paradise and how it really requires the threefold fluctuation of light. People are so inspired by their wonderful service that it requires the Trinity themselves saying, "Thank you. We are satisfied." And I'm thinking of the musicians. It's my privilege to share a few thoughts with you in preparation for worship. So maybe I'll ask for the lights to be dimmed a little bit. So I'm just going to share a few passages. And then I'll ring this lovely bowl three times. And the idea is that you move slowly more deeply into a state of immersion in God's presence. So that progression helps you enter into it. And then I'll ring it again three times so that you can get yourself slowly back out into normal social reality. But I'm going to share a few thoughts with you first. These are some of my favorite passages for helping me to get into a deep state of worship. And I'll be a little liberal with the text. "Mortal men and women cannot possibly know the infinitude of the heavenly Father. But these same finite human beings can actually feel, literally experience, the full and undiminished impact of such an infinite Father's love." I'm going to read it again. Look at the adverbs and the adjectives, the emphases that they share with us. They say, "We cannot possibly know the infinitude of the Father, but we can actually feel." They don't just say, "We can feel and experience God's love." They say, "We can actually feel, literally experience, the full and undiminished impact of such an infinite Father's love." That's an astonishing statement that we down here, we mere mortals, we little above animals, can experience this kind of affection that suffuses throughout our nature, surrounds us, moves through us, and nurtures us, nourishes us, transforms us. Here's another passage that's a favorite. And it's about coming home. The theme here is homecoming, resting in God's love. "Here in Rome also occurred that touching incident in which the Creator of a universe spent several hours restoring a lost child to his anxious mother. God, the Creator of a universe, took several hours, and the mother was anxious. This little boy had wandered away from his home, and Jesus found him crying in distress. He and Gated were on their way to the libraries, but they devoted themselves to getting the child back home. Gated never forgot Jesus' comment. You know, Gated, most human beings are like this lost child. He didn't say some human beings or many human beings. He said, "Most human beings." I include myself in that category. I think all of us, even though we have found this remarkable revelation, are steeped in it, wander away from home and wander away repeatedly and need to come home repeatedly. So I'll say it again. "Gated never forgot Jesus' comment. You know, Gated, most human beings are like this lost child. They spend so much of their time crying in fear and suffering in sorrow, when in very truth they are but a short distance from safety and security, even as this child was only a little way from home." So what does it mean to come home to God? I think it relates to this statement that we can literally experience, actually feel the full and undiminished impact of the Father's affection and our mother's spirit and Jesus. And I don't know about you, but my experience is I wander away repeatedly and need to come home repeatedly. And that's what worship is about. It's about returning home, immersing ourselves, bathing, being suffused by God's love, God's affection, and allowing it to bring us to a place of coming home. I'll share one more phraseology that's very helpful for me, and then we'll worship. And it's the section where Jesus, in His teachings on prayer and worship, called worship, "Effortless attention, true and ideal soul rest." Effortless attention, true and ideal soul rest. This is a process where we come to God, and I'm going to suggest that you make a request to God. And that request is, "Please, show me your feelings for me. Come like a little child that comes to the parent and says, 'Pick me up, hug me, hold me. I come to you in a place of need because I've been wandering. Help me to come home to you. Help me to rest in your love, to open fully, to open wide, to receive what you want to give me as much as possible.'" So get comfortable. We'll dim the lights a little more. And let's engage in a few minutes of homecoming, resting in God with love.
Thank you, Marvin. Thank you, Marvin. Welcome to the evening session. I'm going to introduce our speaker, Kurt Sira, in a second. I just want to give you a snapshot of where we're at in the program, or at least my conception of it. So Stuart gave us the background, led us up to McKiessick entering that tent. And then Elizabeth reviewed for us those powerful spiritual forces that guided cultural and religious evolution almost, well, without revelation, punctuated by revelation, but revelation that was largely forgotten. And we finally got the teachings from Chuck, which is quite powerful. Before we move on to playing the third epical revelation forward, we want to pause and talk about that quality of revelation. What is it about? of revelation. What is it about revelation that's the essential contribution and how does that work and how does that take us forward in that sense that Chuck reminded us was a new thing, a powerful, creative, active force as opposed to a kind of responsive or reactive urging is born from our nature. This one comes down, not from up, not up from the bottom, down from paradise as opposed to up from our planet. Kurt is another one of the longtime readers of the Urancha book, active in our community. He discovered the book in Milwaukee 50 years ago at the age of 19. And he studied the book alone for several years, 13 years, before he was finally moved to connect to other readers, joining a local study group, which he eventually led until he left Milwaukee and attended his first conference in 1986, which I understand was held at Lake Forest College here in the Chicago area. And he's been a regular conference goer and contributor ever since. In 2000, he moved to South Florida and connected with the Florida students of the Urancha book and eventually became an officer and conference organizer with the Agendanta Boot Camp Society. In 2003, he began listening to the audio versions of the book in his car on his daily commute. And he's on his 10th, well, I'm sorry, no at about his, he's on more than 10 run-throughs. At his 10th run-through, he got the strange notion that he was, that when he was listening, that he should be looking for an acronym about religion, his favorite topic. And so he, he found that and coined the term ROPE for the Religion of Personal Experience. And this has become his passion in the last few years to develop that acronym and that, that theme for himself and for others. Since retiring about three years ago, Kurt's become even more involved in the Urancha community. He's active in several different projects with, with many people in this room and others. And as I'm sure, I'm sure you've run into him before and heard him before and it's always a moving experience. And I will say personally, I ran into Kurt for the first time in our, one of our study groups about, I don't know, a year ago. And we've all had that experience where a new person pops up on the screen and wow, all of a sudden, I knew right away, here's somebody who, again, has a great mastery of the book and has really, really made it a personal, had developed his own personal experience and worked a lot on being able to share that with others. And it was quite motivating. So I was proud to call him a friend and was happy to, like so many others, meet him for the person for the first time the other day. So Kurt, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening, anyone, everyone. I'm glad that Tim read that very well, just the way I wrote it. Except he left out that the one thing I'm proud of is that I've actually gone through the book now 40 times, start to finish, in the audio version. And it's a, I'm going for 50. So. So I was honored when Tim asked me to speak here at our conference on the mission of Macaventum McKiessig. After listening to the preceding presentations and knowing about those that are going to follow, I'm afraid that I may seem to be covering a lot of the same ground that the other presenters covered. But that's okay. I often say that the Urancha book was written by the Department of Redundancy Department. Because they often tell us the same thing over and over again. You know, can you remember Jesus telling the apostles the same thing over and over again? But restated in different ways in the hopes that we will eventually understand it. And I think you'll find from my presentation that that's how revelations work. They tell us the same things over and over till we finally get it. So let's take a look at this. Let's look at this as a chance to have a look into my mind and how I look at the history of revelatory religion on Urancha. I'll be sharing with you a very brief and abridged overview of what I have discovered about revelatory religion. It's also the setup for my workshop on the same topic tomorrow. So what is religion? I've been giving some presentations on the religion or personal experience, which I called rope, to some Zoom study groups. And it's really a huge topic and it usually takes me 90 minutes. I go through each word, religion, personal experience. It takes me 90 minutes to get through religion because there's so much. I'll try to get by here in a couple of minutes tonight. I'll talk about what kinds of religion exist in Urancha. You know, on Urancha? Well, there was a typo. What was revealed about religion in each of the five epical revelations? How did evolutionary religion prepare the way and set the stage for each epical revelation? Finally, I'll look at how evolutionary religion was changed by each revelation and how in some cases evolutionary religion changed the revelations. And all this will give us some background for the question that will be the basis for my workshop tomorrow. What can we learn from the history of revelation and religion, which can help us in spreading the religion of personal spiritual experience that the Urancha book reveals? Well, this is a word cloud of the 100 most used words in the Urancha book. The larger the text, the more times the word appears. Religion shows up in the top row, just right of center. It should come as no surprise that religion is a major topic in the Urancha revelations. The word religion in these four variations appear 1,327 times in the Urancha book. By contrast, the word religion only appears five times in the Old and New Testaments combined, mostly in the, in the New Testament. That we learn about religion was obviously very important to the revelators. So look at definitions of religion. The dictionary definition from one of my favorite dictionaries online when I'm studying, Webster's 1913.com, says, "Religion is the belief in and worship of a superhuman controlling power, especially a personal God or gods. Among the roots of the word are the old Latin word religio, meaning obligation, bond, reverence, and another old Latin word, relegari, which means to re-tie or bind, as in to re-tie and bind one's connection with God." Makes the rope acronym very appropriate. So my Urancha book engine brings up a 113 occurrences of the phrase, "religion is." And that's one reason why I spent 90 minutes discussing this exhaustively in my study group presentation of the rope. But this is a baker's dozen of short excerpts that will give us a feel for some of the essential ideas and how the book defines religion. So religion is a faith trust in the goodness of God, a living and dynamic experience of divinity. It's the striving to know God and manifest love for one's fellows through service for them. Religion is man's supreme experience in the mortal nature, but finite language makes it forever impossible for theology ever adequately to depict real religious experience. It's a wholehearted devotion to some reality which the religionist deems to be of supreme value to himself and for all mankind, an experience in which the sovereignty of truth, beauty, and goodness prevails. True religion is alive. Its expression must be restated every time the dictionary of human language is revised. It's the act of an individual soul in its self-conscious relations with the Creator. My favorite quote, the one that I got the phrase, the rope from, is, "Jesus founded the religion of personal experience in doing the will of God and serving the human brotherhood." Doing the will of God, serving the human brotherhood. Religion is ever and always rooted and grounded in personal spiritual experience. I love this line. "It is high time that man had a religious experience, so personal and so sublime, that could, that it could be realized and expressed only by feelings that lie too deep for words. While religion is exclusively a personal spiritual experience, knowing God as a father, the corollary of this experience, knowing man as a brother, entails the adjustment of self to other selves. And that involves the social or group aspect of religious life." In Paper 103, The Religion of Human Experience, in the introductory section, they tell us there are four kinds of religion. There's natural or evolutionary religion, philosophic religion, composite or practical religion, and then supernatural or revelatory religion. But to add a bit of complexity to this, in Paper 195, at the beginning of the Discourse on True Religion, Jesus tells the apostles, "There are two forms of religion," but then goes on to describe three kinds of religion. There's natural or evolutionary religion, and the two kinds are primitive religion and what Jesus termed the religion of civilization. The second form is true religion, which he called the religion of revelation. Jesus then helps us to understand what he means by these terms. We'll first consider natural or evolutionary religion. Primitive religion is the semi-natural and instinctive urge to fear mysterious energies and worship superior forces, chiefly a religion of the physical nature, the religion of fear. It is mind-derived and evolved by the ministry of the Mother's Spirit. I recently created a new acronym for our universe Mother's Spirit. I love acronyms. I call her Mum, my universe mother. Because I needed an affectionate term for mothers to go along with the one that I have for my father, which I call Papa. So what are these ministries that our Mum bestows on mankind and make primitive religion come about? It's what Elizabeth talked about in her talk this morning. So we have the ministry of the Mother's Spirit. There's the agitant of worship, which is the appearance in animal consciousness of super-animal potentials for reality perception. This might be termed the primordial human instinct for deity. There's the agitant of wisdom, who works with the agitant of worship. It's the manifestation in a worshipful mind, you already have to have the worship, of the tendency to direct its adoration away from nature and natural objects into higher channels of expression and toward ever-expanding concepts of deity-reality. And finally, there's the ministry of the Holy Spirit. This is the initial supermind bestowal, and it unfailingly appears in all bona fide human personalities. We all get it. It's like the umbilical cord that, from our mother that's connected to us. Everyone gets it. This ministry to a worship craving and wisdom-desiring mind creates the capacity to self-realize the postulate of human survival, both in theological concept as an, and as an actual and factual personality experience. The next stage in the development of religion is the religions of civilization. These are the advancing religious concepts and practices of the civilizing races, the religion of the mind, the intellectual theology of the authority of established religious tradition, this philosophic religion, man-made or philosophically thought-out theological doctrines and reason-created religions. And finally, practical religion, a composite of revealed and evolutionary religion, combined and adapted to the mind readiness and the social conditions of the times. As I view it, almost all organized religion currently on this world falls into the category of practical religion. I think that almost all of us have had experience of being involved with one or more of the religious institutions in the course of our lives. And they stand out in contrast with true religion, the religion of revelation. The revelation of supernatural values, a partial insight into eternal realities, a glimpse of the goodness of, and the beauty of the infinite character of the Father in heaven, the religion of the spirit as demonstrated in human experience. I think that this is the religion that Jesus and the Urancha book calls us to. Revelation tries to raise us to the highest form of understanding and connection with God that we are capable of. Yes, that we are capable of. There are always the limitations that come from our limited experience and current knowledge. And therein lies the difficulty that the revelators have in teaching us humans. In the acknowledgement at the end of the foreword, the revelators are upfront with us about what they can do. They tell us, "We are guided by the mandate of the super-universe rulers, which directs that we shall, in all our efforts to reveal truth and coordinate essential knowledge, give preference to the highest existing human concepts pertaining to the subjects to be presented. We may resort to pure revelation only when the concept of presentation has had no adequate previous expression by the human mind. Successive revelations of divine truths invariably embrace the highest existing concepts of spiritual values as a part of the new and enhanced coordination of planetary knowledge. This concept is foundational to all the revelations. If it is to succeed, then a revelation must be based on conceptual ideas that are already present in the person or society at the time of its presentation. Wherein these human concepts, assembled by the God-knowing mortals of the past and the present, are inadequate to portray the truth as we are directed to reveal it, they say, we will unhesitatingly supplement them with..." Yep, something, oh, hang on a second here. I screwed up. Well, with their own revelation. I probably missed up my slide here. So they conclude, now, going to talk about what the inner, finish up what the book says on revelation with this quote from the foreword, the acknowledgement at the end of the foreword. "We are fully cognizant of the difficulties of our assignment. We recognize the impossibility of fully translating the language of the concepts of divinity and eternity into the symbols of the language of the finite concepts of the mortal mind. But we know that there dwells within the human mind a fragment of God and that there sojourns within the human soul the spirit of truth. And we know that these spirit forces conspire to enable man to grasp the reality of spiritual values and to comprehend the philosophy of universe meanings. But even more certainly, we know that these spirits of the divine presence are able to assist man in the spiritual appropriation of all truth contributory to the enhancement of the ever progressing reality of personal religious experience, God consciousness. We are provided with everything we need to know to become like God." And it recently occurred to me that the atheistic conspiracy theorists everywhere have missed the greatest conspiracy of all. The spirits of the gods are within us and around us, constantly ministering to us to help us discover the reality of God in our own personal experience. Well, let's look at the interplay, the dance that takes place over time in individuals and society between these evolutionary, practical religions and any new revelatory religion meant to upstep our understanding and spiritual growth. Although there's much information on this in the book, I've picked just two statements that I think give us the basic principles at work. "When the planetary prince arrives on a primitive world, the evolved religion of fear and ignorance prevails. The prince and his staff..." The prince and his staff make the first revelation of higher truth and universe organization. These initial presentations of revealed religion are very simple. And they usually pertain to the affairs of the local system. Religion is a holy and wholly evolutionary process prior to the arrival of the planetary prince. Subsequently, religion progresses by graduated revelation as well as by evolutionary growth. Each dispensation, each mortal epoch receives an enlarged presentation of spiritual truth. And religious ethics. The evolution of the religious capacity of receptivity in the inhabitants of a world. Largely determines the rate of spiritual advancement and the extent of the revelation. From the paper at the heart of our conference here on Macaventim Melchizedek, they tell us. You who today enjoy the advantages of the art of printing. Little understand how difficult it was to perpetuate truth during these earlier times. How easy it was to lose sight of the new doctrine from one generation to another. There was always a tendency for the new doctrine to become absorbed into the older body of religious teaching and magical practice. A new revelation is always contaminated by the older evolutionary beliefs. These are the principles that govern how revelation works to change the existing religious forms. Revelation is designed to change the existing religion. But the existing religion has always changed the revelatory message to be more acceptable to the commonly held concepts. It is likely no revelation will ever be wholly successful, in my opinion. People and institutions must adapt them and downstep to where their understanding is grounded. If the ideas and ideals being revealed are too high, then the people will either reject them. Or adapt them down to the level where it rests on a firm intellectual foundation for them. Only then can they be more, can more be gradually extracted from the revelatory message to provide material to build with. Well, let's see how this is played out over the five ethical revelations that Urantia has experienced. Let's begin our look at the relationship between evolutionary religion and revel. Revelatory religion by looking at how mankind progressed from the first, from the days of the first humans. To the first revelation of religion by the planetary prince and his staff at Delamacia. In the first paragraph of paper ninety-two, the revelators tell us that evolutionary religion arose slowly throughout the millenniums of mankind's. Experiential career, through which the ministry of the following influences. Operating within and impinging upon savage barbarians and civilized man. The appearance and animal consciousness of super animal potentials for reality perception. This might be termed the primordial human instinct for deity, and it's brought about by. Our super animal endowments. That's back to the adjutants of worship, wisdom, the Holy Spirit. And in those days, it's the very occasional thought adjuster. This brought about the urge to worship, beginning with a belief in the spirit world. Anything could be an object of worship, from rocks and plants to heavenly bodies and even man himself. Religious ideas developed to explain good and bad luck, along with the techniques to coerce the spirits to get what was wanted. Primitive magic. Their primitive religion tried to explain death, projected an afterlife. And this brought the idea of the soul, but along with it, the fear of ghosts and the magical techniques for dealing with them. This led to the rise of priests and shamans to perform the rituals required to deal with what was feared. And occasionally, a religious teacher would arise among the tribes with a philosophically discovered religion. To uplift the people's ideas of God. There have been hundreds upon hundreds of religious leaders in the hundred year, million year human history of Urantia, from Anagar to Guruup Nenak. But this, but during this time, there were, there have been many ebbs and flows in the tide of religious truth and spiritual faith. And each renaissance of Urantian religion has in the past been identified. With the life and teachings of some religious leader. In paper sixty-three, they tell us, as the Andonic dispersion extended, the cultural and spiritual status of the clans's retrogressed. For nearly ten thousand years until, until the days of Anagar. And when I was doing my research, I found Anagar to be amazing. This is really amazing for his time. Who was this first real religious teacher of the primitive Adonic tribes? Well, let's look more closely at him. He lived near the start of the pre-planetary prince epoch. And I think he's just a remarkable example of an evolutionary religious leader. He was born nine hundred and eighty-four thousand years ago. That was about fifteen thousand years after Andan Infanta. He began what the revelators call mankind's first real religion. He taught the concept of one deity, which he called the breath giver and proclaimed the concept of the afterlife, which he termed the great beyond. Anagar sent out the world's first missionaries to remote settlements. He was so successful. The book tells us that thought adjusters and guardian seraphim came in great numbers for the first time. He began what is termed a golden age of primitive man. But as we will see as a common occurrence with revealed truth. And this is, you know, kind of a personally revealed truth that he was able to share. That after eighty thousand years after he left, it was basically all gone and mankind had reverted to a more primitive state. It was time for a new ethical revelation. Well, this is the first ethical revelation carried by the planetary prince, the Dalmatian tree teachings. The true concept of the first source and center was first promulgated on Urantia by the one hundred corporeal members of the Prince Caligastia's staff. This expanding revelation of deity went on for more than three hundred thousand years until it was suddenly terminated. By the planetary succession and the disruption of the teaching regime. Except for the work of Van, the influence of the Dalmatian revelation was practically lost to the whole world. And even the Nodites had forgotten this truth by the time of Adam's arrival. Of all who received the teachings of the one hundred, the red man held them the longest. But the idea of the great spirit was but a hazy concept in Ameri- Amerindian religion. When contact with Christianity greatly clarified and strengthened it. So the planetary prince Caligastia arrived about five hundred thousand years ago. There was a half a million years of this primitive religion. With no revelation other than what mankind could work out on their own. Dalmatian, it was in the Persian Gulf region and people were brought, were taught by the prince's staff of one hundred. Rematerialized Jerusalem citizens. Among the ten working groups of the staff was a commission on revealed religion. And all they taught, they would only resort to pure revelation after the whole evolutionary process was exhausted. They had to use everything that the people had already gained as a basis and foundation. And when everybody was up to that level, then they could introduce new revelation. What they taught was limited by the ability of the people to comprehend. They worked slowly to build a stable foundation for a society. Took them three hundred thousand years. They did not send out emissaries to tribes unless asked, but instead they brought their best candidates to them for teaching and training. They taught God is the first source and center. They taught a gospel of individual initiative. They taught a form of religious ritual observance. They had the daily praise phrase. I love that. And they taught the father's prayer. I'll read this because it speaks to the level of the people's receptivity at, at that time. Father of all, whose son we honor, look down upon us with favor. Deliver us from the fear of all save you. Make us a pleasure to our divine teachers and forever put truth on our lips. Deliver us from violence and anger. Give us respect for our elders and that which belongs to our neighbors. Give us this season green pastures and fruitful flocks to gladden our hearts. We pray for. The hastening of the coming of the promised upliftor. And we would do your will on this world as others do on the worlds beyond. They taught a moral code of seven commandments that would be also be the basis for the moral codes of Eden and Melchizedek later on. And it was during this dispensation that the primary midwayers came into existence to work with the prince and the staff, his staff and their, these, their efforts. But as we all know, it did not end well. After about three hundred thousand years of work, long before their work was done, Caligastia and much of his staff entered into sin and rebellion. Almost all the gains that had been made in planetary culture had been wiped out. We are told that the Caligastia scheme proved a swift and more or less complete failure. Society quickly sank back, not very far in advance of where it was at the very beginning of the Caligastia regime. And left the world in confusion, worse confounded. Some of the staff did remain loyal to Michael. That and the commission on revealed religion remained loyal, along with Van, the leader of the loyal staff. Well, after the rebellion, a council of planetary receivers was set up to rule in the place of the fallen prince. They planned for the rehabilitation of the world, but the work was slow. It took almost a hundred thousand years to set up. Just three hundred and fifty advanced outpost to maintain civilization. And by the time mankind was biologically ready for the material son and daughter, only a few groups on earth were ready. For the next revelation. This brings us to the second ethical revelation, the Adenic teachings. Adam and Eve again portrayed the concept of the father to all the evolutionary peoples. The disruption of the first Eden halted the course of the Adamic revelation before it had ever fully started. But the aborted teachings of Adam were carried on by the Sethite priests, and some of these truths have been. Never been entirely lost to the world. The entire trend of Levantine religious evolution was modified by the teachings of the Sethites. But by twenty-five hundred B.C., mankind had largely lost sight of the revelations sponsored in those days. We're told that in the first gar- those in the first garden were taught by Adam and Eve and their descendants. While the Nodite descendants of the prince's staff were entrusted with education and worship in the second garden. The book tells us, the religious teachers or priesthood originated with Seth. The eldest surviving son of Adam and Eve, born in the second garden. Seth became absorbed in the work of improving the spiritual status of his father's people. Becoming the head of a new priesthood of the second garden. His son, Enos, founded the new order of worship and his grandson, Kenan. Instituted the foreign missionary service to the surrounding tribes near and far. More advanced students taught those who were less advanced. No doubt, this was a technique that Adam and Eve borrowed from the mansion world schools. The Adenic teachers taught the worship of God the Father and him alone. They established a Sabbath day of self-culture, rest and spiritual worship. They taught a moral code based on Delamacia, but they taught additional reasons for these rules of conduct. They encouraged spontaneous praying over set prayers, but with little success, much like Jesus had with his family. The Sethite priests taught advanced and more or less accurate spiritual truths. Teaching the advanced students about deity and universe administration to the system level. Mistakes were made in the organization of the second garden after the default. After the death of Adam and Eve, things began to slowly deteriorate from the levels they had reached. Its civilization had not evolved beyond the past culture. And they say it was an artificial structure that was destined to fall back to the natural evolutionary level. The teachings of the Sethite priests took hold for a time, but gradually their influence began to deteriorate. In India, for one example, the idea that they taught of the Trinity was lowered and expressed in the triune fire gods. And the Nodite teachers of the garden who Adam entrusted reverted to the pre-adenic standards of their ancestors. We're told that the angels and the thought adjusters continued to struggle heroically for the salvage of the individual. But that no comprehensive plan of spiritual uplift for the planet happened until the arrival of Melchizedek. Almost thirty-two thousand years after Adam and Eve. I also note that it was during this time the secondary midwayers came into existence, but interesting to me that most of them. Chose to join the rebellion in spite of seeing what the effects of it had been. There were so many, there were many Adamic missionaries, Sethites who spread the gospel of the one God beyond the second garden. To the Sumerians in Mesopotamia, the Chinese, the Egyptians and the Aegean region. But success was limited and it was always diluted by the mixing with the existing cultures. Revealed truth was threatened with extinction during the millenniums which followed the miscarriage of the Adamic mission on Urantia. Though making progress intellectually, the human races were slowly losing ground spiritually. About three hundred thou- about three thousand B.C., the concept of God had grown very hazy in the minds of men. So twelve Melchizedek receivers received word that they could, should continue to uphold truth in the manner of their own election. And it was in consequence to have, consequence to having been thrown so completely on their own resources that Macaventim Melchizedek. One of the twelve planetary receivers volunteered to do that which had been done only six times in all the history of Nebadon. To personalize on earth as a temporary man of the realm, to bestow himself as an emergency son of world ministry. So we finally arrive at the third ethical revelation, Macaventim Melchizedek, the object of our study for this conference. Melchizedek of Salem, this emergency son of Nebadon inaugurated the third revelation of truth on Urantia. The cardinal precepts of his teachings were faith, trust and faith. He taught trust in the omnipotent beneficence of God and proclaimed that faith was the act by which men earned God's favor. His teachings gradually commingled with the beliefs and practices of various evolutionary religions. And finally developed into those theologic systems present on Urantia at the opening of the first millennium after Christ. So Melchizedek, as we know from our past presentations, he appeared four thousand and one years ago. Near the site of the current day Jerusalem. The methods he used in his school for teaching were based on the older methods of the Sethite priests. Because he knew well, know about them well, and wanted, worked with what did work well. And was part of the evolutionary process. He did as his previous revelators did and gathered around him the pupils, disciples and believers. Who had formed the nucleus of the later community of Salem. He called God El El Yahn, the Most High, and he's, he was known as the priest of El El Yahn. And the sage, sheik or king of Salem. Of special interest to us Urantians, of course, is that he wore on his chest an emblem of three concentric circles, the satanic symbol. Of the Paradise Trinity, which became regarded as sacred by his followers. And he created a tithing system for support of his mission that is still used by many churches today. He taught. El El Yahn, the Most High, is the creator of the stars of the firmament, firmament, and even of this very earth on which we live. And he is also the supreme god of heaven. He taught about the universe to the level of the constellations and to his more advanced students. Uh, to the, or to the more advanced students, he taught those levels, the, up to the constellation. The Trinity, he also associated with the rulership of the three most highs of Adentia, kind of dumbing it down a little bit, but that was what they could comprehend. For most common students, he did not go beyond this level of revelation, but to some, those that were ready for it. that were ready for it, those who had the capacity, Melchizedek taught advanced truth, embracing the conduct and the organization of the local universe, even truths of the super universe in Havona. He taught his followers all they had capacity to receive and assimilate, and even many religious, modern religious ideas about heaven and earth of man, God and angels. Melchizedek subordinated everything to the doctrine of one God, a universe deity, a heavenly creator, a divine father, appealing to man's adoration, preparing the way for Michael as a son of this same universal father. The worship and beliefs of the Salem religion were simple. His creed was limited to three simple statements. "I believe in El El Yahn, the Most High, the only universal father and creator of all things. I accept Melchizedek's, the Melchizedek covenant with the Most High, which bestows the favor of God on my faith, not on sacrifices or burnt offerings. I promise to obey the seven commandments of Melchizedek and to tell the good news of this covenant with the Most High to all men." There were, he taught a moral code of seven commandments that were, again, were pattered along the lines of the Dalmatian law and resembled those taught in the first and second gardens. These commandments of the Salem religion were, "You shall not serve any god but the Most High Creator of heaven and earth. You shall not doubt that faith is the only requirement for eternal salvation," and numbers three through seven were five basic laws of moral conduct. He didn't allow sacrifices, but knew how difficult it was to suddenly uproot long-established customs. He wisely offered these people the substitute of a sacrament of bread and wine in the place of the sacrificed flesh and blood. He never fully succeeded in eliminating the old sacrifices, even with Abraham. We read about Michael's bestowal charge in Paper 120, and those are quite extensive. Melchizedek's bestowal only had two main goals, to keep alive the truth of one God and prepare the way for Michael's bestowal as a paradise son of the same universal father. Melchizedek's star pupil and disciple, Abraham, was an individual of much promise and was chosen by Melchizedek to bear the responsibility of keeping the truth of one God alive after he left. Melchizedek made a covenant with Abraham, and I think this is something we should all ponder. Does it still hold today? This covenant of Melchizedek with Abraham represents the great Yorantian agreement between divinity and humanity, whereby God agrees to do everything. Man only agrees to believe God's promises and follow his instructions. Well, now we move into the transition period between Melchizedek and Michael's arrival, that period of about 2,000 years. And since Derek Samaris will be talking, speaking more on the Salem missionaries tomorrow evening, I'll only take a brief look at their work here. The Salem missionaries penetrated to all the surrounding tribes as the many, as the decades passed, and these teachers journeyed farther and farther from Salem, carrying with them Melchizedek's gospel of belief and faith in God. They traveled to Egypt, Mesopotamia, Asia Minor, the Lake Van region, India, China, Japan, the British Isles, and even to Iceland. They carried the message over time to many peoples, to the many peoples of the Occident and the Orient. This map probably misses some of the areas of the world where they journeyed, and about the only people who did not receive some form of the Melchizedek gospel were those in the Americas and on the various Pacific islands. But there were many difficulties and problems for Melchizedek's teachings, and we can learn a lot sometimes from the failures as much as from the successes. Says, "The task was so graced and the tribes were so backward that the results were vague and indefinite. Except in Palestine, never was the idea of one God able to reclaim the continued allegiance of a whole tribe or race. Long before the coming of Jesus, the teachings of the early Salem missionaries had generally submerged into the older and more universal superstitions and beliefs. Often they were absorbed into the existing beliefs in the Great Mother, the Son, and other ancient cults." Let's see, hang on a second here. Another big problem with the Hebrew priesthood, the teachings, the teaching, okay, let's start that again. Another big problem was the Hebrew priesthood. The teachings of the Melchizedek were full and replete, but the records of these days seemed impossible and fantastic to the later Hebrew priests. And they say the national ego of the Jews was tremendously depressed by the Babylonian captivity. So in their reaction against the national inferiority, they carefully edited out their records for the purpose of raising Abraham and the other national leaders high up, above all other persons, even Melchizedek himself. The Hebrew scribes destroyed every record of these times which they could find. So they say, "And thus, in losing sight of Melchizedek, they also lost sight of the teachings of this emergency son regarding the spiritual mission of the promised bestowal son, lost sight of the nature of his, this mission so fully and completely that very few of their progeny were able to, willing to recognize and receive Michael when he appeared on earth and in the flesh as Machaventa had foretold." Which brings us to Jesus of Nazareth. Christ Michael presented for the fourth time to Yorantia the concept of God as the universal father, and this teaching has generally persisted ever since. The essence of his teaching was love and service, the loving worship of a creature's son voluntarily gives in recognition of and response to the loving ministry of God his father. The free will service, this, the free will service which such creatures bestow upon their brethren in joyous realization that in this service they are likewise serving God. Well, let's see. I think what I'm going to do is skip forward here because we're, we're kind of running late on time, and what I'm going to do is, uh, let's see here, how to do this. What I'm going to do is bounce ahead to what I'm going to be talking about on Monday. We're going to go in my workshop, we'll be going through the revelations that Jesus brought, and we'll also touch on the Yorantia revelation and in particular, where we go with it. But on Monday, I was, as I was finalizing this presentation, I thought it'd be interesting to see if I could chart the progress of spiritual enlightenment on Yorantia over time, and this is my first crude attempt, but it may be helpful in visualizing how this whole process of evolution and revelation work as I just described. So on the vertical axis, we have the level of spiritual enlightenment, and on the horizontal axis, we have the last 1 million years of time since humans were on earth. So, starting at Andon Infanta over here, a million years ago, there was very, very gradual or almost no progress at all till we hit Anagar. And Anagar presents this revelation that he was able to develop, and it upsteps the level of spiritual enlightenment, and it gradually, over time, that message starts to get carried out to the people and it starts to grow a little bit, but then, it starts over the next 400,000 years, it goes lower and lower till it's almost back where it was at Anagar. And that's when the Dalmatian teachings arrive with the planetary prince. So, at Dalmatia, we get another revelation that takes a long time to start developing. First, they took 200,000 years, and then we have this darn rebellion that takes place, or 300,000 years, and then we have this rebellion that takes place, and things drift back down again till we get to Eden. Eden, we get this shot of revelation and spiritual enlightenment that's given to the planet through that revelation, and boom, we got, things come up, and the Adamic default happens, and now we start sliding back down again till we get Melchizedek, who then kicks it back up again. He brings this new revelation. Well, the Melchizedek revelation actually kind of goes in, you know, it has all these little revivals that take place. The initial one comes up, and it gets spread around, and then it drops down over time. And what happens? We get another, some other little revelations that come in 600 B.C. from the, you know, the various religious teachers that arose in Buddha and Confucius and others, until Christ Michael arrives, and he gives a tremendous amount of new revelation. And what happens with that? Well, it starts out pretty good, falls off during the Middle Ages, rises back up again with the Reformation, materialism and secularism strikes society, and guess what? Time for a new revelation. So, what happens next? What will be the outcome of this dance taking place right now between evolutionary religion and this new revelation of the Yorantia book? What compromises will be made that determine its future influence on the spiritual and social progress of the planet? That'll be my topic for discussion in my workshop tomorrow. And that concludes my brief history of, history of revelation. And tomorrow morning, thank you. Tomorrow morning, we'll go from here and have a discussion on what we can learn about the history of revelation and religion that can help us in spreading this religion of revelation that the Yorantia book reveals. So, thank you.